Welcome, everyone. We're getting ready to start our informal session. And Mr. Tohaney.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of council, good afternoon. The first briefing will be provided by Chief Stroud, the EMS, EMS chief. And he's going to give you an overview of the strategic plan that was recently completed by the department with our key stakeholders, and also give a overview of EMS as it relates to the state of EMS currently and some of the needs and challenges that they're facing. So at this time, you'll hear from Chief Stroud. Go ahead, Chief.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you for allowing me to come in front of you and talk to you a little bit about our recent strategic planning efforts and give you an update on some important stuff going on in emergency medical services. So with my time with you, I'm going to review the strategic planning process we recently completed. You have an overview, a one-page overview of that plan, I believe, in your packet, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. And then I am going to discuss some key challenges that likely stand in our way of full completion of our strategic initiatives that we'll have to tackle in the years ahead. And then I'll close with discussing next steps and take any questions you may have. So for the first time, EMS engaged an unaffiliated third-party consultant, the McChrystal Group, to lead our strategic planning efforts. I got to tell you, staff was extremely pleased with the professionalism, tact, and flexibility that our consultant team of Aaron Sutton, Peggy Timmer, and Olivia Monroe provided us. This was an exciting endeavor that was fully transparent and fully inclusive with participation from our many stakeholders. Those stakeholders include the rescue squads, the Virginia Beach Volunteer Rescue Council, the Virginia Beach Rescue Squad Foundation, IAF representatives from IAFF Local 2924, the city manager and his chief of staff, the fire chief, the medical director, and of course EMS staff from varying ranks. Our goals were to establish a shared vision, identify new organizational values that will guide our future efforts, and develop strategic initiatives in support of these key objectives. I wanted to include this slide so you can have an idea of the work that our consultant engaged with us on and led our team through. This was a very collaborative, thoughtful, and intentional process. The work's also ongoing, as the McChrystal Group will moderate a presentation of the completed plan with the leaders of our different stakeholder groups in the weeks ahead. This is so we can find alignment and discuss opportunities for these partners to use their resources to help us complete our strategic initiatives. Just as a kind of a quick reminder, a quick review, if you'll allow me. So the vision is intended to be, a vision statement is intended to be aspirational in who we hope to be. The values are our shared expectations in what helps us establish and maintain our culture. The objectives are what we commit to accomplishing over the next two or three years. In this case, two years is what we're discussing. They are the what, and the strategies are the how. Key results and initiatives should be activities in support of those outcomes. So I believe you all got a handout of this mission, vision, and value statement, which will become a poster hanging in all of our facilities. Our collaborative work group reached consensus and established the updated vision of provide exceptional prehospital care through seamless teamwork, empowering a diverse system that provides innovative and compassionate service. Together, we agreed upon five core values to help us achieve this vision. Collaboration: We're a system of many parts and agree to strive for unity because we can accomplish great things together. Professionalism: Whether career or volunteer, we agree to hold ourselves to high standards. System Sustainability: We're very proud of the history of our third-service combination system. We want to honor that past while we attend to the present. But we know that we also need to be adaptable and committed to preparing for our future. Community: We are all members of the community, and we're here to serve and meet the needs of that community. And clinical excellence: Our efforts and programs need to be patient-centered and outcome-focused. So once we have that vision established, we must assess where we are at today and what needs to be overcome. We did that through various group brainstorming activities with our stakeholders in order to establish objectives, results, and initiatives. Those objectives bridge the gap from current operations to our aspirational future and are geared towards tangible outcomes and overarching purpose. And again, those key results and initiatives are those activities conducted in support of the desired outcomes. It's a very busy slide. It looks even busier up on the big screen. I think you have, hopefully, you have a one-page of the handout of this in your packet. I'm not going to review every specific detail of this slide for you. However, I want to review the identified objectives that are across the top row and touch on a few highlights, some of which I'll expand upon in my remaining slides. Objective number one is to increase staffing to support call volume demand and protect career longevity. We want to be able to hire and train qualified applicants in a timely fashion. And there'd be enough to provide the minimum staffing needed using the ratio of one ambulance for every 3,000 calls for service. Number two: Build a stable, sustainable system for patient care. The expenses to equip and maintain the EMS system, which includes the volunteer rescue squads, have far outpaced existing revenue sources and fundraising efforts. We spent a lot of time as a group discussing the need to increase predictable revenue year over year through a sustainable funding source. We want to be the premier choice for volunteering or employment for Virginia EMS professionals. Our career employees have more opportunities for EMS employment than ever before, many of which are higher-paying, have better schedules, and less workload than we do. We need to take care of our members, and this starts with making sure they have the adequate resources to do their jobs, are compensated fairly, and have a workload that isn't burning them out or having negative impacts. EMS is a physically taxing, highly stressful, and exhausting job, which leads to increased risk for burnout, injury and work-related illness, and cardiac issues. We also know that volunteer retention is directly impacted by the experiences they have on shift, and those experiences must also have a manageable workload, be fun, and the volunteer members must feel valued and taken care of. Our fourth objective is to effectively manage and drive relationships with our entire team of stakeholders. We want to strengthen those partnerships and formally recognize the roles of each stakeholder through the establishment of MOUs. This will help ensure we're not duplicating efforts, we're complementing one another, and have a unity of vision. And finally, serve our community as the industry-recognized leader for prehospital care. Our members want us to broaden our service delivery model to include more comprehensive community paramedicine and mobile integrated healthcare opportunities. I'd be remiss if I did not take a moment to review some of the support you all have provided over the last several years. You've made a sizable investment in additional positions to get us to where we're at today, as well as two significant grants to the rescue council to help offset expenses. Your support and efforts we've made in the last year, such as lowering volunteer duty requirements at their request, as well as new staffing deployment models, have helped slow the rate of member attrition and increased our response time goal performance from 53% in 2022 to 66% today. We are also cautiously optimistic that for the first time in four years, we're on track to realize more active volunteer members at year-end than we've lost. However, there are still some big challenges for us to deal with. Undoubtedly, our staffing levels are our biggest challenge and impact so many different facets of our member experience and our organization. You received a staffing study in your packet, and you'll see that we staff far fewer ambulances than we should for our call volume. In fact, when you compare staffed units to calls for service, you'll see we fall behind every other Hampton Road City, Henrico, and Chesterfield Counties, and I even included Omaha, Nebraska, since they have almost an identical population in call volume. While 60 additional response positions have been added in the past 14 years, there's still challenges. There's 250 fewer active volunteer members today than there were at the close of 2010, or about five ambulances worth. It takes 40 to 50 volunteers to staff one ambulance 24/7, or 10 career providers with a leave factor being built in. This means it took a minimum of 50 career providers to account for that decline. You must then consider the continual increase in call volume. There are 30,000 more calls for service today than there were in 2010. This alone would have equated to the need for 10 additional ambulances since that time. The reality is, to meet our staffing, response time, and workload goals, we need at least 20 ambulances staffed during the daytime and no less than 16 at night. This averages out to 18, which is very close to the one per 3,000 using 56,000 calls for service ratio we're trying to achieve. Today, we have 90 career providers that can be allocated to ambulance staffing regularly, so that's nine ambulances. Takes 10 for each ambulance. Currently, we have 250 active volunteer AICs, so that gives them the capacity for five to six ambulances. If all factors, such as availability that volunteers provide, were equalized, which they are not, the system only has the capacity to provide 14 to 15 ambulances. For example, there are 15 ambulances staffed today with 11 and 1/2 scheduled for tonight. To add to that challenge, each day has different staffing levels, and I can't tell you what the staffing level will be on any given day next month until that day happens. At least 46 additional employees are needed to help us meet minimum ambulance staffing needs. The sooner the better. I should also note, we made efforts to hire already-trained and certified providers, and that pool isn't as deep as it once was as there are more competitive career opportunities locally than ever before. We will need to start to hire EMTs and train them to be new advanced life support providers through an academy format. So our second big challenge is, we also have to make sure there's enough ambulances for these people to staff. As you'll see in the ambulance needs assessment you received, we believe that the system needs 10 additional ambulances for our fleet as well as a regular replacement program. The cost of an ambulance has increased 30 to 40% in just the last two years. A new ambulance can cost $300,000 to $350,000. Once the required ancillary equipment is added, that cost is north of half a million dollars. We also need to be mindful, though, as we need to add ambulances to the fleet, that means it will require additional resources for fleet services to take care of these ambulances and additional garage space. The third key challenge is lack of a sustainable and sufficient funding source. As you know, the rescue squads are challenged to have the funding they need to buy ambulances, supplies, and equipment. As you know, we're already challenged to get enough members to staff ambulances. There's also challenges in having enough support membership to conduct the fundraising. And we now have the additional cost of standing up and sustaining a pharmacy program with significant annualized expenses. With increased expenses, increased staffing, and equipment needs, there needs to be new revenue. As you know, we've partnered with the Virginia Beach Volunteer Rescue Council to commission a study on compassionate EMS billing as an opportunity, and we look forward to presenting that to you in late November. So where do we go from here? We're going to spend some time sharing our strategic plan and educating our members and stakeholders on it. In October, I'm going to hold two EMS member town halls to discuss this and other related departmental updates. We're going to bring you the EMS billing study in late November. And most importantly, we're going to work the plan. The strategic plan will provide the basis from which staff work plans are developed, future funding requests are generated, and many of our efforts are allocated to. So finally, I'd like to close by reminding all of you that even though we have challenges, we do provide exceptional patient care. We continue to be recognized by the American Heart Association for our cardiac care efforts. We get positive feedback from our patients, and we're providing innovative prehospital lifesaving interventions such as whole-blood administration and pretty soon ultrasound in the field. This system is in a better place today than it was yesterday. However, if we do not find viable solutions to these significant challenges, we risk further impacts to our equipment, our infrastructure, and most importantly, to our members. So with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Yeah, let me just start by saying real quick that this is a definite confrontation with reality. And the reality also is that the silver tsunami is upon us. You know, all the baby boomers from the 50s and everything are coming into their 70s, 80s, 90s, and it's actually going to add considerable stress to the system. But once again, this is a reality that we have to confront. And I am delighted your interaction with the fire department. But I think we're really going to have to go to the next step. Huch.
Thank you, sir. So Chief. A couple of things that I was thinking as you were speaking, I think we already kind of talked about this earlier. If you mentioned it, I'm sorry I missed it, but what's the wait time on getting ambulances if you purchased them right now?
So 18 to 24 months is cautiously optimistic.
Yeah, so 24 months is really what we should be thinking, as council. So has there been any movement? And I know it's difficult, I get it. But have we done anything about moving forward, getting you the ambulances you need? Because how many are you short? I should ask that as well.
So we believe we need 10 additional ambulances. That's in addition to ones the rescue squads already have on order that they're waiting for. And so, no, we have not done anything to close the gap on those 10. There's no funding identified.
So for us, you know, that's what's going to end up happening is that we've got to have them, or we're going to be borrowing them from other cities. You're going to see Norfolk ambulances where they've got spares. It's just not a good system that we'll be relying on if we don't move at some point to make this, get this 24 months started, right? There's not going to be any magic wand that's going to cut it to six.
No, not that I can find.
It's not. I knew the answer. Sorry. The other is, is that, so when you were talking about the ambulances, the call volume, what is each ambulance averaging right now? It's all right.
No, no, I have it, so we're on average. And keeping in mind, we have to use staffing averages because we staff different every hour of the day and every day of the week based on volunteer availability.
I'm really building to another question.
So we're staffing one ambulance for every 3,700 calls.
Okay, I'm from Kempsville, buddy. I can't do the math that fast. But let's just say it's 20 calls a shift, okay? All right, times five is 100. That's what you're short every day, pretty much, is what you're saying, right? You'd like to have five more ambulances.
Absolutely.
What I'm saying to us is that when you do that, you're now going into the second call. So it's your second due. Like, if that ambulance, if your ambulance is not at the station or available, then you've got to go to the ambulance coming from Councilman Taylor's, or you've got to wait, the fire truck's coming to get you. So that's what I'm trying to say. We need to think about it as wait time. And if, you know, if you've got a bloody nose, that's one thing. But if you're having a heart attack, that matters. So that's what the chief is trying to tell us. In my world, is that we want to get to 20 because that's where we need to be for burnout and everything else, but also because the citizens and the tourists deserve it so they're getting their first due ambulance on scene.
Correct. So for example, there's 15 ambulances staffed today, or at least there was when I came in. We know statistically, and we keep track of this with a dashboard, for every hour of the day, every day of the week, we know that every hour of the day between 9:00 AM and 9:00 PM, at least 7.5 of those 15 ambulances will be committed to an incident. So that means that leaves the remaining 7.5 to cover the 250 square miles.
Thank you.
Okay, Barbara, and then Jennifer.
Well, in reading this report, and it was very good, and a lot of good in-depth information in here, I just had the feeling that this is something that needs to be right at our top priority, along with maybe drainage. But this is certainly life and death. And I think when we look at these numbers and the time it takes to get an ambulance, the time it takes to train new people, the fact that we are losing our volunteers, we have trouble retaining them for a lot of reasons, I think this is something that needs to come right to the very top of our concern. Yes, we do wonderful service. And of course, the thing that our folks don't always appreciate in addition to the wonderful service that they get is that they don't have to pay for it. But we've got some issues here that I just think we have to be very much concerned about. And I don't think it's a matter of sitting back and let these things gradually come to us. I think we need to go out there and start trying to address these issues because, as you just said, just in the time it takes to get an ambulance, you're talking a long time. We can't decide today we're going to do it, and next week it's going to be here. And that's the same thing with training more people or hiring more people. So I really think this needs to be a very, very high priority. We can't say top priority with anything anymore because we've got too many up there. But it needs to be a very high priority. And I hope we will recognize that and see what we have to do to. And I think the first thing we have to do is take it to our citizens and give them the straight story. I mean, the number of calls that each one has to take and so forth is pretty astounding. And I just don't think, I think we take it for granted, and we really need to address it. But I really appreciate all that everybody does. I mean, I think they do such a good job that we assume everything is fine. But after a while, there are needs, and I think those needs we need to address.
You know, and I agree with Mrs. Henley. As a matter of fact, sometimes in my neighborhood, you know, which is out toward the Kempsville, you know, Centerville area, I see Ocean Park, and I see people coming from the oceanfront, Sandbridge. You know, the second calls are, and they're time-consuming. And we're talking about, you know, neither a heart attack or an accident. You know, time is essential. Jennifer, and then Michael.
I just want to clarify the request for financial support and the fundraising gap. So between what you're able to fundraise and what the city, what's the number that would help close that gap? And then these numbers here for council support, so the VB rescue council grant, you requested $750,000 for fiscal year '24?
The grants, that's how much council appropriated to give to the rescue council to disperse to the rescue squads.
And then for fiscal year '25, you're requesting $800,000?
Council approved $800,000.
Approved $800,000. Okay, so can you talk to me about the numbers?
I've tried to.
Yes, best you can.
Yeah, so as the manager said, those are two grants you all have already decided to give the rescue council, which help them make ambulance loan payments, which help them buy equipment and fund operating budget things for their own rescue squad. And, you know, I guess let me use an example, if you will. We know we need to add the additional staff. I'm pretty sure that comes at least to about 3.5 million, you know, year one. We know we need to add 10 ambulances. That's at a cost of $5 million. We know we need a plan to replace six to seven ambulances a year. And the replacements are a little bit less because we can use some of the same equipment moved over. But that's, I believe I had it in there, was a 3 million, 4 million. So when you start to add those, that's the funding gap. We don't have any of that funding.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think that was part of the reason why the rescue council proposed to kick off a study on compassionate EMS billing. And that's the process that's being undertaken right now and was being communicated to the city council as well. The results of that are being finalized with the rescue council. They're trying to get a sense of how that could possibly meet the needs. And once we get more details on that one, that's when we'll come to brief the city council about that to get a sense of where council wants us to go and if the council wants us to move in that direction or not.
Okay, Michael, on that touch.
Thank you, Chief. Just have an observation, an experience that I want to share, that Virginia Beach Volunteer EMS saved my dad's life when he was having a heart attack. It responded very closely. That was in 2017. I will always be grateful for the professional service that you provided to my dad and to our family. And as a result, we've been able to continue to enjoy his presence in our life all these years later. So I have a special place in my heart for the men and women who work on the professional side and on the volunteer side, and for the fire department who also responded that day, who brought him back to life and kept him alive. And I know so many other people in Virginia Beach have those similar experiences. I've also been on ride-alongs with Virginia Beach EMS, and I have a sense of just how dedicated they are to their work. But in those experiences, I should say also, I've had a chance to visit the city garage, where the team of professionals there work very hard around the clock to keep those ambulances, particularly the, I visited where they service the ambulances, to keep those ambulances on the road. It's like a symphony, actually. The professional staff, the volunteers, the scheduling, the vehicles, the mechanics, how all these things come together to provide this vital lifesaving service. And a few of the other things that I've noticed through those experiences are that when I've been on a ride-along, you know, they respond to a call, they service that call, they transport if necessary, they clear, and they get another call. And they can be anywhere in the city. So those vehicles are busy, and they're driving on, you know, they're driving fast. There's a lot of wear and tear on the vehicles. And then I see our incredible volunteer rescue squad councils, you know, doing like Plaza does, like fall craft festivals, and a lot of community-driven work to raise funds for this. And I want to continue to empower those rescue squad councils to make those contributions because those contributions and the work they do to support that service is really important to them, too. So I guess I have a couple of questions. One is, and Mrs. Rouse's question helped me with that. What actually do we need? And I think you addressed that. I want to share that I think we need to prioritize this need as part of the next budget cycle for all the reasons that I mentioned and the essential lifesaving services that are provided. But we need to continue to have that symphony working in cohesion. But also, how do we continue to support and empower the volunteer rescue squad councils? I don't want them to sense or to feel that, you know, this council or this city government isn't valuing their contributions because we do. We're just not quite meeting that need. And maybe is there another way, instead of the ambulances? Is there another way that they can support? Because I think a lot of people don't know, sorry, I'm talking a lot here, but I think a lot of people don't know that it's not just the ambulances they provide. It's all of the equipment that goes in the ambulances. They really work hard to raise that money, and we're so thankful. And they're really proud of that contribution they make. And I want to continue to support them in making those contributions, but also, you know, kind of meet that need. Because, you know, they're running calls so quick, all the time, all the time. And we've got to make sure we have vehicles on the road, plenty of vehicles on the road, and at the same time, support the council's contributions.
If I could, I have three bullet points in response. One, I think one thing we can do for them is to listen to what they're telling us. And so we conduct exit surveys on every volunteer. Well, we ask every volunteer leaving the system if they will do an exit survey. Not all respond. But the data we get back is pretty consistent. First of all, life changes happen, right? People have kids, they get married, they move away for jobs. We know Hampton Roads is, population kind of revolves 25% or so every year. So some of that happens. But the personalized feedback we get is pretty consistent. Duties aren't fun anymore. It's too busy. I don't get a break. The call volume's too high, et cetera. So we have seen a direct correlation to when we increased staffing levels, like you all did the last couple of years. I told you that we're cautiously optimistic that we're seeing for the first time we're going to have more attendant charges at the end of the year, volunteer-wise, than we've lost. Well, we've added a lot of staff that are helping share the load of the call volume. I think the other feedback we hear consistently, and I hear this when I attend rescue council meetings as well, is members get pretty frustrated being split up from their partners or moved from their volunteer rescue squad so often. So we do somewhat centralized scheduling. Members join an individual rescue squad. However, when they report for duty or they give their availability, we often have to move them. So maybe they joined Kempsville Rescue Squad. We'll have to move them to the Thalia Station or to the Plaza Station or any of the others because we don't have enough staffing and resources. So we're trying to make best use of what we have. So most of our career staff are advanced life support providers, well, all of them are, advanced life support providers, where years ago, it used to be the volunteers staffed all the ambulances. Our paramedics would staff chase cars to be able to respond and give them advanced-level care. Well, now we have to use our providers to staff ambulances because we don't have enough people. people. So we have to get the best use of our resources and split up those volunteers, which means we've lost a lot because they don't get to run with their volunteer buddy, right? People, I can tell you from experience, people join a rescue squad, they decide to volunteer for various reasons. Maybe they want skills training, job training, maybe they're just at that point in life they want something else to do or they're looking to give back to their community. I promise you why they stay is because of the relationships they build and the social nature of those rescue squads. And we've somewhat degraded that by not having enough staff. So if we had more staff, we, it would give us the opportunity to move them less. And my third point, specifically about the ambulances, and I put this in the ambulance study, I believe it's imperative for the rescue squads to maintain some pride and ownership. I think it's very important. And so I think they need to be at the table when, I think there's also efficiencies and standardization to pursue, but I think it's very important for the rescue squads to maintain ownership of the ambulances and to be at the table to help design kind of a system ambulance that they can add their own flair to.
Okay, Patrick.
So Mr. Paul, really, come on for the manager. So when you were talking about the compassionate billing, two questions. One is, is when can we sort of expect for that to come to us and when would it go into effect in your opinion?
So the consultant, I think, has sent the draft over to the rescue council. It's a rescue council product and a council authorized us to participate financially with them on it. And they're in the process of trying to bet that out and give council a consideration of how it could possibly be implemented.
Okay.
We're, they, we're hoping to be able to get that to you all in November standpoint.
Okay, cool.
Yeah. And then, then we'll look at the council to give us direction on how best to proceed with that, you know, in terms of, do we want to take it up as part of the budget? Do we want to take it up as a standalone item? No matter what, it doesn't happen, the rescue council can't enact it, staff can't enact it, council has to be the one to empower us with it.
Okay.
And from what we're seeing, it looks like it's possible for, to do compassionate building in Virginia, because I think that's one of the things the rescue council was interested on, is can it be done in a way that still prevents a bill being given to residents in Virginia Beach? And it looks like that's possible, right? Just the attorney's office, our attorneys haven't seen it yet, and I haven't actually seen it yet as well. So once we get more information on it, then we'll bring that to city council for you all to consider and give us direction. We could either work to implement it as part of this budget process or do it as standalone item, but no matter what, I think it takes about 12 to 18 months to actually fully realize it.
And then the second part of that is, and we can go low, you know, on this number, what, what's the, what's the low end of the amount that we're thinking of that it's going to be? Because I think it's, I think it's going to be very interesting for everybody to hear this.
Chief Stroud, you want to go ahead and give like a rough order magnitude of what we've been hearing?
Yeah, I think, I think conservatively, taking into account bad debt and write-offs and collection percentages and all that, talking with our consultant, I think we're looking at compassionate billing, net revenue of about 14 million year one, potentially up to 17 million by year five with the increase in call volume.
That was, that was the response I was figuring I would get from somebody is that it would help them, it would take care of a lot of their budget and a lot of their needs and help would fire. There's a, the new pharmacy protocol, I mean, there's, there's just a lot that that would go for. And we're talking compassionate, would you, would you give just a second on what that means, please, so that we understand it here?
Chief, you want to go ahead? You're probably better articulated than I am.
Yeah, I think the idea of compassionate is one, absolutely nobody gets turned over to collections. Two, you minimize out-of-pocket expenses as much as you can. And three, you possibly even consider not billing a co-pay when possible. There likely is some regulatory leeway that allows us, well, that would allow you to make the decision, a policy decision to not charge residents a co-pay. So that, that's part of the information we've asked the consultant to dig into and provide us when we bring it to you in November.
You can see that we're, it's not $12, you know what I mean? This is, it's a considerable amount of money that is, is already being used in other ways. I don't want to lead us down the wrong path, but could you talk to that a little bit about how that money is being collected at other places or is that a misnomer, like the hospitals and et cetera?
Yeah, well, I think it's, it's obviously a fair statement that all of us in our insurance premiums pay for an ambulance transport benefit, which if you get, if you get transported in another city, those cities are charging that. But we don't, we do not realize that here in Virginia Beach.
Thank you.
Sabrina.
I just want to thank you for bringing all of this to our attention and all of the work that was done into doing that. You made it so clear, next steps, this is how we should respond. And we've talked about it, these are lifesaving services, right? And so of course you need more than thank you and appreciation, right? And so I think, as was mentioned, since these are lifesaving services, we do need to prioritize it and it should be our top priority. And I would like to find out how we could, perhaps if it's discussing it during the retreat, perhaps we're talking about firefighters and their concerns there and how we can best serve them. And I think we should also make sure this is a priority during our retreat and actually figure out how to have some action steps to addressing the next phase of the plan here that you've so eloquently stated for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else? I think this is one that we really got to get to, get to yes on. Okay, going forward. Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay. All right, moving on, you know, council discussion. I think obviously, one of the things that we have to address right now is we received a disappointment last week with something in the water postponing. And I think to get things rolling before we have the discussions, you know, have a comment and then to get our liaisons and then open it up. Patrick, you have something to read?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I got a couple of statements. I got one statement from the city to kind of express what our role was and kind of what kind of funds have been spent, if any funds have been spent as related to the Something in the Water Festival. And I also received a statement from the Something in the Water team that they asked me to read to the council and the public. So the first statement, this is on, from the city's perspective and the city operations and the city staff. So our city employees are committed to delivering the highest quality of service to the residents and guests of Virginia Beach for all events, large and small. We want to thank the festival team for acknowledging the city's efforts in their public statement, which is why we understand that when it comes to events of this magnitude, sometimes event organizers, event organizers have to make hard decisions. We acknowledge the festival's decision to reschedule the October date so that the experience they produce meets the expectations of their fans and the Something in the Water brand. However, we cannot ignore the frustration we've heard from our community about this decision. To be clear, this was not a call by the city. We were made aware of the rescheduling within the same hour the public statement was put out. What you know about that decision is what we know, and it would be inappropriate for us to comment on their behalf about their difficult decision. The facts as we know it, from a city planning standpoint, are the site plan, transportation, communication and public safety logistics were on track. These plans can be recycled for future planning purposes. Funds set aside for the festival sponsorship are still available within the current fiscal year budget or can be redirected. No funds have been spent yet. The decision to rebook to April is not yet solidified by city council. Our objective now is to move forward with the future in mind and for what is best for Virginia Beach while weighing the options as we consider April 2025 with city council. The next statement is from the Something in the Water team. We all know there is not an advocate who loves Virginia Beach more than Pharrell. He's worked tirelessly with his partners at Live Nation to bring this festival to life year after year. This year is no different. Over the past 18 months, he's continued to highlight Virginia and Virginia Beach specifically across his global film, music and fashion initiatives, and that will not stop now. He said in his public statement, Virginia deserves the best. After spending considerable time with the members of the music community, we have collectively decided that a festival in April will be far more substantial and impactful for the city of Virginia Beach and allow some of the participants who had committed and endured conflicts beyond Pharrell's control to participate in April. We are confident in the potential and impact of Something in the Water and have received unprecedented support off the back of Pharrell's film screening as well as current and new partners. April will be stronger than ever. Thank you for your patience, understanding and unwavering support. We will shift the planning to deliver the best festival yet and have a concrete plan set within this calendar year. Thank you, the Something in the Water team.
Thank you. And, you know, let me kick things off. You know, obviously, this is disappointing in many ways. You know, Pharrell is a, you know, very part of the DNA of our city. You know, he's in a lot of ways a heart and soul. You know, and you've heard this, a number of you before, you know, when I was sworn in on November 20th of 2018 and about two weeks later, I got approached with Something in the Water. And, you know, there was a lot of folks that didn't want it. And, you know, given the history of Week 17 and everything, I said, this is something that we got to try. And it was remarkable that in four months, four months, and, you know, I'll give Aaron Rouse some credit, you know, for helping expedite that back then, it was a magical time. And, you know, anybody that attended that event, you know, you saw youth out there high-fiving the cops and the fire people and it was just a feeling of positivity in the air that was palpable. And it was a major, major success. Fast forward to the next year, COVID. When we found out about COVID, they said, oh, don't worry, it's only going to be two weeks. And then all of a sudden, we started, had to cancel wrestling tournaments and cheerleading tournaments. And, you know, we were hoping that the outside events would go, but then, you know, we actually had to make the call and cancel not only Something in the Water, the Shamrock Marathon, the Rock and Roll Marathon, it was one right after the other. It was painful. And then, you know, there was an unfortunate situation the following year, you know, that they tried another place. And, you know, we brought it back last time and then, you know, we had a, you know, very serious weather event, things of that, things totally out of our control. You know, it's been my observation that this is such a big, you know, magnitude event. And to me, it just seems that, you know, there's a lot of decision makers out there. But in some ways, I think the city has been left out of the decision loop, you know, in terms of what goes on and operations. I don't think we're really part of the real conversation when they decided to move it from April to, you know, to October. And, and then also, you know, I spoke to, you know, one of Pharrell's people about the disappointment, you know, when we knew the date, we couldn't tell anybody, but then it kind of leaked out through another source and everything. And, you know, it's just my feeling that we have been reactive, you know, to events that were coming. You know, for instance, when they wanted to increase, you know, the, they headed the way starting at the last one and we had to move the, and time up to about one o'clock in the morning. And, you know, that was, you know, weighed heavy on, you know, that was not an easy decision. But I think, you know, going forward, you know, I think we have to be more proactive than reactive. We have to be part of the decision loop. You know, even, but once again, we didn't even know what entertainers were going to come and, you know, we were selling tickets, you know, without the folks, you know, knowing what was going on. And, but the other thing is too, you know, I think that, you know, as we build this bridge of trust and commitment, you know, I would just throw out there that rather than doing this year to year, that we may be considered, you know, that let's do this on a three-year or five-year, you know, commitment basis so we could actually make these planning. I think it's, I believe it's easy logistically planning, because when you think about all the moving parts that go into this, you know, between police, fire, EMS, public works and, you know, just, you know, the magnitude of what it takes, you know, bringing in state police, you know, and doing things. And then the other thing is, I understand that also a number of vendors that were coming here to be support or, you know, to, you know, help out with this thing, that, you know, they've been disappointed. But the thing is, I think if we are, you know, just quite frankly, become more part of, you know, inside the decision loop of what's going on, so we know what to expect. And then once again, if we could also get a longer-term, you know, commitment, you know, and, you know, and actually be proactive partners, you know, with this, you know, on a, you know, a basis. But once again, you know, a lot of decisions are being made and then we're being living with them. And I think, you know, if we can kind of do this and kind of redefine the language, that through this adversity, we can find the opportunity to move forward and truly make this a legacy event that we could all look forward to. Now I'm going to ask the liaisons, let's go with Amelia and then Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. You've mentioned some important things about lessons learned. It is important, not only to the vendors, but also to families, our young fans and so forth. So there's been a lot of impact. You also brought an important point of us being more reactive than proactive. And I think that message is ringing true to Pharrell and his team because we have been in several meetings, council member Rouse and myself, since then, and they're trying to bring in plans. One point that they mentioned is, please understand, this was not a cancellation but a postponement. But we still have to come together to the table and look at how for further impact this would be. So I will move things over to Councilwoman Rouse.
Yeah, so we, as the liaisons, we learned about the decision to postpone the festival maybe like an hour or so before the rest of council did, which is about when the public did. So we didn't have much more information than you all did when you received the email, but over the weekend, there were lots of phone calls and meetings between the city staff and the festival team to try to get some answers because between Dr. Ross Hammond and myself, and I'm sure a number of people at the table, we received a lot of reactions and questions and frustrations and concerns, which I want to validate and let the public know that, you know, from emails or Facebook posts or things, that we made sure to share that with the Something in the Water team as well as the city to say, this is what's happening with the public. What response can you give, if any, at this point? And what information can you share? Because we were in an information vacuum, right? We had more questions than answers. So some of what developed was, were these two statements that, to try to give some context to the city being ready and having plans in place to deliver a festival, but Pharrell feeling that the festival itself wasn't ready. And so there was just a disconnect there. So in having some of the conversations with the Something in the Water team, and it's something that city council has to decide, so we'll have a conversation about it, but a takeaway I got was Pharrell has big ideas and big vision. So from his partnership with Louis Vuitton and bringing Virginia into that partnership, the Lego movie and bringing Virginia into that partnership, that there's really big, he connects Virginia to really big things. And my takeaway was, as the festival was going forward, he thought this could be better. So if the spotlight is on Virginia, is this what, is this Something in the Water going to live up to the standard that I've been trying to set for what Virginia can do and what Virginia is all about? So something I want to highlight from this statement that may be worth part of our consideration is we let, we, we as liaisons, right, didn't take a side, but tried to say, here's where the public is, here's where we think the council's going to be, here's what we need, here are our questions, what can you help us with so we can try to get some clarity? And so the final line of the statement, it says, we will shift the planning to deliver the best festival yet and yet have a concrete plan set within the calendar year. So we said, if it's a postponement, then at what point can we know what April is going to look like? And the sooner we know that, the better for everybody to see, okay, we've got, you know, lineup, we've got dates and it's something tangible we can work with. So that was something we were pushing the festival team on and we'll see that there will need to be more conversations about that. But in terms of transparency, so we, as liaisons, there was nothing for us to share because it was all rolling until it wasn't. And so it was just over this past weekend that we were able to sit down and as best we could, share all the feedback we were seeing. So for the public who felt caught off guard, we were caught off guard as well. And for the public who felt frustrated, we shared those frustrations with the team and with the city. And the response we got from the festival team was, you know, that's obviously not anything they would ever want to do and wanting to, they want to make an intentional effort to rebuild credibility and trust and all these things. So I want to commend our city staff for putting in lots of hours to get the festival up and going and even over the weekend, putting in hours to try to get some information that we would be able to share with everybody today. And so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, Josh and then Barbara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to both of you very, very much because I know we each serve as liaisons to boards and commissions and, you know, other special projects as they come up. And I know you said that there might not have been anything to share and you shared with us what you knew and when, but that, that doesn't mean that there wasn't work being done all along. And I, I know that a lot of that work is preparatory work in collaborating with staff and in your case, the festival organizers. So, so from my perspective, I just, I want to share my, my full faith and, and confidence and appreciation for your abilities as, as co-liaisons to try and shepherd the best you could, this, this, this through and work with staff. And I also want to commend the, you know, the CBB staff and our, and our, and the rest of the people from, from, from our city who, who worked so hard, public safety, everybody who was, who was ready to go. And, and it's, it's a testament to, you know, the fact that we are, we're a wonderful beach community that, that really should celebrate our way of life on our, on our front, on our front stage, which is our, which is our beach. So, but again, I just wanted to say thank you very much for the, for the time, effort and energy that you spent on this and that goes to everybody in the gallery as well.
Barbara.
Everybody did do a lot of work in, in good faith. And that's what we have been working on is through good faith. But it's more than just- But it's more than just a disappointment to a lot of people. It's cost a lot of people some serious money, particular hoteliers and folks at the ocean front who have spent a lot of money or made commitments and now they're not going to be able to have the income that they had anticipated. So this is more than just a disappointment. This is costly. And we have to understand that that's what it is. And if we are going to be supportive of something, we've got to be able to assure, and we've got to give our, I think we sort of wanted it to happen so much that we've just been willing to go along. And I appreciate every week when Amelia would come in and say, well, the lineup's going to be next week and the lineup's going to be, well, we just can't work that way anymore. So I think we take this as a learning experience for anything we do, not this one, but any of them that we do. We have to set benchmarks. We have to know exactly what's going to occur. We can't just be reactive. We've got to be a part of it, as the mayor said. We've got to be proactive. And I think that's what we need to be doing right now, is we determine what our standards are going to be and what we're going to expect. And we can't just do it on good faith. We've got to do it with certainty, because it's cost our citizens a lot of money. Our folks who are out there are going to be in serious concerns between now and October, and, and we can't, we can't expect them to do that anymore. We are going to have to set the standard, and I think that's what we need to be coming up with right now for all of our participation with, with other entities, not just this one. It's got to be a standard that we set.
Well said, Barbara. Chris and then Amelia.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, and thank you, Councilmember Taylor, for your comments. Hopefully the Something in the Water team is listening. I think it's important that Something in the Water team understands that as the city of Virginia Beach, we also have a brand and an image to protect, just as Pharrell is the ambassador for Louis Vuitton. When you spend thousands of dollars on a bag, you expect there to be good quality construction of that Louis Vuitton piece. And people in Virginia Beach, especially stakeholders and business owners, expect us, that when we say we have a partnership or relationship, to be forefront. I want the public to understand, because I brought this up, there was an email sent in June, June 4th, and this doesn't disparage or say people weren't working, but there were questions asked along the way. I sent an email on June 4th to the liaisons and our city manager for the record, and it says, hello, council liaison, several local business leaders have inquired about the status of the 2024 Something in the Water Festival. Many local businesses are doing their best to plan in advance for any opportunities to participate in the festival. Can you provide us with any information related to dates, artists, commitments, communications with Something in the Water team? Several people close to Pharrell have made comments that he may or may not participate in the festival. I received a response from Dr. Ross Hammond saying, Councilmember Taylor, we appreciate your inquiry and concerns. Rest assured that we are in communication with the Something in the Water team. More information will be shared with our colleagues and the public in a timely manner. So there was communications. We've had two festivals now scheduled and then abruptly canceled. Last October, city council voted for a festival. I didn't vote for that. City manager had to come in at the last minute because of logistics and cancel. That doesn't look good for the quality, for the brand. It doesn't give consumers confidence. It doesn't give business owners confidence, and they were canceled. Feedback that I've received from stakeholders, we're not friends with Something in the Water team. We have a relationship, it's business. Feedback, very little communication, vagueness, unresponsive, lack of concern for citizens, lack of professionalism in preparation. Pharrell said he was looking to move the festival dates from April because of inclement weather, but now we're told we're going back to April. We stood up a task force over 750 hours of volunteers to come up with the plan because they moved the festival. This is, this is not a game. This is not about Legos. This is not about a movie. We have a brand as Virginia Beach. Hours of volunteers, businesses prepared, hotels, some non-refundable rates, overpriced, and these individuals, these consumers, these citizens, some people stood in line for hours upon hours, only to find out three hours later it was canceled. I don't believe that we just found out at the last minute for something of this magnitude. There should be more planning. And just as EMS director just told us, from his assessment, the organization has to go from being more, has to be more proactive instead of reactive. We should set the standard. We moved festivals, we invested hundreds of thousands of dollars, 750 cash, honestly, only to have a festival that failed, flopped, didn't produce much, and now we're being told April's great again. I have concerns, citizens have concerns, and I know we want to, you know, be friendly and cordial and all that, but this is impacting hundreds and thousands of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Amelia.
Well, I have to agree with what you're saying. This impacted us, and we were literally almost sunk for whatever little that we knew, because they wanted to share it first. It's the same thing. I was in the train coming Amtrak from Crystal City that day. 10 o'clock heard, 1:15 heard, everything still ago. Need the lineup, but they said it would come after the tickets. 3:27, I got the call, it was canceled. So just what Councilwoman Rouse was saying, we're both on the same spot, that we felt, what you call blindsided at that point. And they're doing all they can right now to try to correct this. They have to build trust back with this city, because we're not a toy. And people need to understand that we try to be a people of our word. So moving forward, this is why it was important for them to have a statement, because we're going to hold them to that statement. I felt sad today coming in where a father stopped me. He may be listening. His daughter drove all the way from Virginia back to stand in line. These are the stories we're hearing, and these are serious stories. And I've been on the phone half hour ago with the team. So they are already working, because this is very important. If they want to continue working with us as a city, they now have to stand up, let us know the plans, and believe that what they tell us, at least as internal, we're going to keep it internal and not share it all with the world. I guess that's the entertainment business. But definitely, this is important, and I know they are listening, because we're saying as much as we can. But we spent hours, 8 o'clock meetings, late night meetings, Amanda Jarrett calling 10 o'clock, this is happening, that's happening. Nancy, Bill Kelly, they've all been working on behalf of the city, and they know we are not happy campus. So when we go into a closed session of what, we look at the situation for what it is, and, you know, if something sounds and walks like a duck, then it is a duck. But right now, if they're trying to let us know there was a bigger picture for this reason, we need to know and hash out next steps. Because yes, he is a wonderful person, they're bringing great acts, but sometimes you have to cut off how many groups you have and just say, hey, we promised city, we're going to move forward. But he felt, and that's the word we got, that there was something even bigger he wants to share and include the city. So that is where we are.
Anybody else? Sabrina.
So, so how do, how do we do that? So we know what we want to do, we know we want to hold them accountable, we know we want to set the expectations, we know we want to be more proactive. How do we go about doing that? What are the, what's, how do we solidify this conversation? So have we ever had a MOU with them?
Yes, we had a contract with them. It was based on the terms that council approved.
And it's, it seems like we're at the table, but we're not really at the table. As we're, we're not in a position to be in communication, and the important details about what's happening, they tell us what happened. And so I guess an MOU, the one that we have in place, you know, certainly that's, I guess, a good start, but I'm looking forward into being proactive in how we do it. Because if, if we have a MOU in place and this still happened, what's, you know, to stop it, something like this from happening again? So just really trying to figure out how we, we want to be proactive, but how do we do it? You know, we have council liaisons at the, at the meetings and communication, but they're not getting the pertinent details. Decisions are being made, and we're not in the decision-making process. Cancellations, different things are just not getting to us. And so really figuring out how we go about doing this, if we do it next time, what's the best way to do it?
Yeah, and I can say, I think, you know, Sabrina's on point. And, you know, that's why I, you know, you know, if we have a, maybe a three, five-year obligation, and then we really, you know, identify that we have to be, you know, brought to the table. We have to be part of the decision loop about what's going on. And, you know, the thing is, you know, we look, you know, a lot of promoters do certain things at the ocean front, whether it be Jackalope, whether it be, you know, the Cajun festivals and all these things, and, you know, they go pretty much accordingly. But this one, let's call it what it is, a major snafu right now. And, you know, I think it's our duty to make sure that when we have any event at the ocean front, there's a positive light on it. This was not a positive light. When you think about, you know, the impact of the hotels, as Barbara was talking about, but, you know, once again, it was a personal thing, because how many folks got calls that people couldn't have booked their weddings, because they were unsure, you know, what was going on? So when it start, you know, you know, hitting, you know, the folks that, you know, save money to come to this, and the expectation's there, and they take time off and everything. You know, there's a bigger picture, and, you know, I applaud Pharrell for wanting to do the utmost quality. But once again, there's also the reality that when you have so many, literally thousands of people, you know, that are impacted on this. So, but once again, you know, I think if we can do a contract and we have, you know, an ironclad MOU with our expectations for involvement, and, you know, because once again, you know, the liaisons have been pro, have been engaged, but usually ex post facto, you know, after decisions are made. You know, perhaps a few folks were, you know, in on, at the table, and, you know, bring out, you know, the realities of, you know, what's going on. You know the city, you know, and a lot of these folks are external to our city. Okay? So I think that's, you know, I think this was at least a good discussion to get things going, and work, please.
Thank you, and I'll be quick. And I'm also very disappointed, not disappointed, very disappointed. A lot of lessons learned here, and I agree with what folks are saying around the table, but in terms of what, what are next steps and how, I agree, potentially, this should be a three-year contract, three-year commitment for what we call Week 17, which is the genesis of Something in the Water. It was a beautiful concept, and I'd like to see it come through. That being said, we also have other interests in that same weekend, and, you know, we can all compare and contrast, but I think we have to have Something in writing soon so we can make a decision. And I don't want to cast any prejudice yet on who is what, but there is other interests, and I think we need to make, so, and I was glad to hear the date of the end of this calendar year, December 31st, 2024. Let's see a proposal, and so we can, with hard class, hard and fast rules and regulations and dates and commitments to be made, and then let's follow up on that.
Okay. I think, okay, just to end this, you know, I think, once again, you know, I think work brings out at every point, you know, to confront the reality that for years, you know, Week 17 was a problematic weekend. And the first time, the first Something in the Water was, you know, specifically addressed to do that, and it did it. And I think if we can put, you know, a legacy of, you know, event situation there that could be looked forward and keep that positivity, and, you know, making people know that they are welcome to come there and it's a safe weekend. If I recall, there was not any major incident that happened that weekend at all. So, you know, let's shoot for that, okay? Thank you all very much.
And just to add, Councilman, that was brought up about, suppose others that we have looked at Week 17, and the team did say, we're willing to collaborate for all you have.
Great. Okay. Okay, Brett's married.
Yeah, disappointing is probably a really inadequate work, because of so many people have been affected, is, you know, the economics of it all, of the hotels and the restaurants and the vendors, and, and then the people standing in line, and the, you know, people buying plane tickets to come, and now it's not going to be here. I mean, it's just, it's almost hard to wrap your head around it. So hopefully, I heard the word lessons learned, that maybe take this as a reset. I think a lot of good things have been said, you know. We had a multi-year contract with Jackalope, we had a multi-year contract with Rock and Roll Marathon. I think that's really a good idea. I would also like to say for the residents that live right there on the boardwalk, there's several buildings that they have to hire extra security, so they're really affected. So when we're talking to Something in the Water people, maybe we should take into effect that some of the things that is impacted, just because we happen to live there. So I, I know you're really good at these things, Mr. Dehaney, of putting people together, and let's kind of find a better way to get from point A to point B, and we really want it to happen. And it's, it's been a good friendship, and it's been good for a lot of people. I think that's part of the reasons why it was such a success and why it's so devastating it's not happening. But let's see if we can make it better than one forward and learn from all of this.
Okay. Okay, any other comments on a different, worth?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Just two quick comments, although they're quick, but Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation, VBCCs, we started, council appointed that in 1985. Just a quick update, Councilman Berluciani are co-liaisons to that organization, and if you recall, last year, we as a body approved staff to move forward with a contract for land at the entrance to TCC on Princess Anne Road. That contract is not ready yet, but it's, from what I understand, soon to be ready. And so once that contract is signed, then it comes back to us for approval to move forward. So what I want to ask is for VBCC, they've not been before us in a number of years, I don't think, to give us an update on VBCC and where they are today, and then also this particular project. It's in conjunction with NAMI, so it's a big project, 60 units total, but maybe one and a half, two acres of land. So we have not yet made a full decision as a body to approve of the sale, but anyhow, that's kind of an update there, so that's forthcoming at some point. And secondly, on Atlantic Park, there's been some social media discussion and discussion in the press media about Atlantic Park and where it is now, where it's come from. So I just want to give another update on my perspective, because as we get closer to the opening, May of next year, you know, we talk about our public dollars, which are significant, $153 million. We own the facilities, the entertainment facility and the parking garage, so those are significant assets of ours. But we as a city insisted on that entertainment venue, and so it's hard to calculate return on investment in one, two, five, or 10 years, when Loud Nation right now is calc, is getting entertainment bookings right now to start in May of next year. We don't know what that is going to lead to in terms of how cool this project is, the surf park, the entertainment value, the retail shops. It's hard to put in writing what that's going to return to us, but the brand it brings to us over 10 years, 15 years, with the entertainment. And also, I'm aware right Then also, I'm aware right now of other investors and hotel owners and restaurateurs and business owners in and around the central beach thinking about making investments in their respective businesses and properties that it could also bring more tax dollars in terms of real estate, higher real estate values. So I'm here to say that it's, it's hard to put in writing. Yes, it's maybe over 10 years, it breaks even, maybe 12 years. But the impact on this, on our brand and what it will bring in extra that we can't put in writing today is very significant. I can't wait for it to open, and it's going to be, as I say, transformative to the beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Rosemary, Amelia, and then Barb.
I have two things as well. I wanted to report about the Southside Network Authority to let you know, it's, it's going to be a delay. And the instruction of the Southside Network Authority's broadband ring has been delayed due to a few factors, including VDOT negotiations for the Midtown Tunnel, US 58, and permitting. So the new timeline anticipates the fiber ring will be completely constructed by the end of February of 2025. It's just turned out to be more complicated, I think, than everybody expected, and they've had a lot of railroad crossings. And anybody that knows anything about dealing with the railroad, that's, it's to be really complicated. There's been a lot of talk about Rudy Park and the $60 million. And I just wanted to, first of all, sort of, a lot of people don't realize how we got to this point. And we had a lot of outreach and a lot of surveys, and there were four proposals that were presented to the public. And one was from a gentleman, which got a 4% of the public was interested in that. Mr. Smith, Bruce Smith, had a proposal, and he got a rating of 6% wanted that. PHR Goldkey had a proposal, and 24% of the public wanted that. And then Parks and Rec put forth one, and 64% of the public received that. Another big complication of this was because of the land being owned by the city and by BBDA. It was a nine vote if it was to go to a different entity, or six votes if the city maintained it, Parks and Rec. That's kind of how we got to Parks and Rec having their proposal. So the manager had in his budget the $60 million, but that's, it's not a hard number because we don't really know what's going to go into that park. And I wanted the manager to kind of speak to that because it's going to be, remember, we're going to have a lot of public outreach, and we don't know what the public wants. We don't know, I mean, we've got to evaluate this. There has to be a parking garage so everyone in this city can have a place to park. I mean, District 1, your folks got to have a place to park when they come down and have their surfboards and their fishing poles and, or whatever it is that they want to do, the amenities at the park. So it's, it's not an in stone number. It's a number that the manager thought might work. But if, Patrick, if you would kind of speak to that, please.
All right, so when, when council was first, after council decided they wanted to develop and build a park at Rudy Loop, it was, I think, December, October of 2023. And staff briefed council and gave them basically a path of three options, right? Part one was basically what council appropriated in November of 2023 when they approved the, created the CIP and approved $4 million. And that's to, and they also gave us a direction to do the RFQ process. That's who, that was the process that selected the firms that met with you last week. And those firms are supposed to do public engagement, come up with concept plans and do some feasibility studies, and then bring those concept plans and feasibility studies to City Council for City Council to make a decision on what kind of design it wants for the park based on the public feedback. When council determines what it wants, that kind of drives the cost and what the park will look like. After council makes that determination and council decides to move forward, then the $6 million for design money can be spent, right? And that's when the designer, the company will work to design the park in line with the vision that council selected. That also then drives into, if we get that far, that's where the allocation of the $50 million will come into play. That could be 50 million, it could be less than 50 million, or it may be more depending on what City Council determines. A big driver in that allocation is the fact that Rudy Loop right now currently has about 300-plus parking spots. It's likely that it consistently used. It's likely if council wants to build a park, they're going to have to not just replace those parking spots, but build an additional parking to accommodate for the new park and any other amenities that City Council approves to be in the park. The go and range for a park, for parking garages right now per space is around $30,000 to $35,000 from what we've previously approved on other projects. So looking at, if council wanted to double the parking, say they want to go from 300 to 600, that's probably around $20, $21 million, right? So that's why a big chunk of that is to basically replace the parking and add any additional parking to support the amenities. But none of those dollars are set in concrete because council has to weigh in and make a policy decision on what kind of project it actually wants for the Rudy Loop development if it wants to move forward with that.
Okay, did you, were you going to speak on this?
Yeah, I was just talking to people in the community. I'm struggling with the premise that we don't know what the public wants. We spent $50,000. And I've heard so frequently that we get so much public input. And I think one of the confusing parts for the citizens is they thought that the ideas we presented were actually realistic. And then they didn't realize until after that those were just kind of concepts. And so when Parks and Rec responded, Mr. Duhany, the citizens thought those were actual opportunities or they had an option. And so I'm just, I'm somewhat confused as, here we are, going to do more input, and I just heard our Vice Mayor say, we don't know what citizens want. Maybe you can redistribute all those surveys to us and all that input, because I thought citizens told us what they wanted. And again, we kicked the can. We also have a developer that owns private property down there that came to us wanting to joint venture, wanting to collaborate. And the council was not interested in talking to that individual about parking. And so I think there's multiple issues and concerns here, but I don't believe the citizens want a $40 million park that includes $22 million in parking. And I'd love in the survey, maybe if we go district-wide, because I don't know many people that are driving from District 1 or 7 with their surfboards to First Street. So maybe we can get an idea of how many people are surfing or fishing and what they desire, because it's just not aligning. And we seem to continue to spend money on surveys and studies to ignore it and then do it again, which we're doing with the aquarium. We hired someone, we told the public they're going to do a study, look at the infrastructure, look at the cost. Then we go in a different direction, we pivot, and now we spend another $100 grand on another study. And so I think we have the data. Maybe it's not what we want, but we should be able to come together as a council with that input and tell the designers what we want to see instead of them bringing us these illustrious, beautiful designs, and then we have to find out how much it costs. That's like going at this backwards. But that's District 8's opinion, but I haven't spoken to anybody in District 8 that is supportive of spending 20 to 30 million on parking at Rudy when we have an asset in the aquarium that's producing. We've learned 4 million more than we were told, running at a lower cost than we were told, yet there's no money for Rudy, for the aquarium. And it's in the race app, both the aquarium and Rudy, and it hasn't been prioritized. So, Mr. Mayor, if you could put in our packet, all the surveys, all the input, because I believe the citizens have spoken on what they want. I just don't know if we agree with what they want. Thank you.
Okay, Barbara?
I just need some direction on how to proceed with an issue that I have in the district. It's very similar to something that we heard last week in our informal session. It was the Alice Creek Oyster Bar Restaurant Update. And I think it was in here to give us the background because in looking at the minutes, the only thing that's in here is the background and the presentation. And I think we heard it because it has the appropriate zoning and therefore can be approved, and it doesn't come to the council. Well, I have a situation, and I think you all got a lengthy email this week, but you've probably heard from it otherwise, at Sandbridge, which is very similar. A property owner is purchasing property and is going to do a very intense development there. And it's already zoned before and therefore will not come to the City Council for rezoning. As a matter of fact, I was at the Civic League meeting, I think, a few weeks ago, and I told them that, because they were asking, you know, what are y'all going to do about this? And I said, well, this will not have to come to the City Council for rezoning because it's already zoned before, and it just has to meet all of those requirements. And if it meets all of the requirements in the ordinance, then it can be approved, which is what I think we were told with this Alice Creek Oyster Bar Restaurant, that it's zoned before and it met all the requirements, and therefore it would proceed. However, this was on our informal agenda last week, and there were speakers allowed to speak. So with my Sandbridge issue, how do I tell these people to proceed? Will they not have any opportunity to make their comments to the council about this very intense development that they feel very strongly about?
If I can recall, I think the differentiation between the two is that the, at Alice Creek, the Navy has the air rights easement on it. And from what I understand, from what the city attorney said, you know, we, that is between the Navy and the developer. I think that was the glitch there.
That is, that is correct. The issue is not one which the city, the issue of the Navy easement is not one to which the city is a party. The briefing last week attempted to make clear that there's a distinction between zoning requirements, which in this case were satisfied, and the Navy's interested in enforcing its easement, which is between the Navy and the property owner. So that was part of the discussion that was in the briefing. And then the issue was that members of the public wanted to speak to that, and that was allowed.
Yeah, but the thing is with the, with this actually, if it wouldn't go to Planning Commission or anything else, it would just be a total by right, yeah?
I don't see anything mentioned here in this, in the minutes, in this data that was apparently passed out last week mentioning the Navy. It just talks about the fact that it already has B4 and it's a conditional site plan approval and so forth and conditions and that and it moves forward, which I think is the situation of the one that I'm looking at. So I just didn't know if there was going to be an opportunity to make it come and speak before the council.
Okay, of course, Mayor, that just came up last night at our forum. We were all taken off guard. We weren't, we hadn't any knowledge of it. But I think, Barbara, to your question is, if, if those members came before us, I believe we were informed that either the mayor has the ability to grant them special.
I would just let you all know that this is an issue just very similar to the Alice Creek. It's a redevelopment, it already has the B4 zoning, and if the conditions are met for B4 and the B4 ordinance. With the plan that is being presented, even though the community feels very, very strongly it's not in the right place, there is no opportunity for the council to hear from the public other than them sending individual notices. They won't have an opportunity unless the mayor says. He will, and so therefore, if he does, then I would let them know that.
Well, I think, you know, there's a differentiation here because, once again, you know, and listen, we listen to the folks, and, you know, they certainly have the opportunity to come at open mic night, you know, to, you know, to voice their concerns on it. But I think, once again, I believe Kathy Warren did read a, you know, statement or something from the Navy that this, it's not the city's decision. In other words, this, you know, to go forward, but the chances are that the developer in the Alice Creek, you know, could sue. But once again, Mark, aren't we bound by law to a degree with, you know, the by right, you know, situations?
And it's need to reflect that. I mean, there's nothing in the minutes that even reflect anything about the Navy. So I would just question the minutes.
The presentation was to say that it is by right zoning, and the city has no ability, there is nothing to come before the Planning Commission or this body. It is administratively approvable and approvable by right, and that's what the briefing was. In response to the community's concerns, there was reference made to the fact that, that there may be an issue with the Navy, that the Navy had sent a letter, and the letter said that they objected to the project based on the terms of the easement that is between the Navy and the property owner. That is potentially not in the minutes simply because the city has no role in that piece of it. But that did get mentioned here that the Navy had expressed opposition to that project because they felt it incompatible with the terms of their easement. I, I don't know what else, I don't know how else to answer the question.
You know, and I think we had, you know, a quasi-similar situation where we were going to put the voter registrar out there, and then we found out at the last minute that, you know, the Navy had an objection and things of that, you know, so, you know, but Barbara, I think there's a differentiation because the Navy is not, you know, involved in this.
I think that needs to be reflected in the minutes, as well as the fact that there were speakers. There's no mention of the speakers here either.
Okay, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just to talk about something else, if I could.
Sure.
May I just clarify though, so you think I should tell them?
Sorry, I thought I, I.
I think that, you know, the best thing you have to do, you know, that's a, because, once again, you know, if we, if we do allow speakers to come, you know, how many do we allow and everything, that nature? But at open mic, you can get a representation.
Okay, so I didn't know.
I'm sorry, I thought I was recognized to speak, Mayor.
Okay, okay, we didn't, Mrs. Henley asked to finish her clarification, okay?
So we will consider a rezoning issue at open mic?
Open mic and talk about everything, okay? But at least bring it forward, and then maybe give them, you know, some education on what by right is, and, you know, and we are by rights.
Thank you, Mayor. Would it be okay?
Yes.
On Saturday, a number of us attended a festival that, that did occur, and a really important festival, and I want to compliment them and thank them. That's the Bridge the Gap Festival organized by Pastor Bobby White and many other volunteers and leaders in our community. The purpose of this festival is to literally bridge the gap between law enforcement and public safety and members of our community. It's to build trust, mutual respect and understanding. And it was a really fantastic festival. We know that without that trust, respect and understanding, our community will be less safe. And also, the people who live here, the citizens of Virginia Beach, will have fewer opportunities to reach their full potential and to be successful. The Bridge the Gap Festival is a partnership between a variety of agencies within the city of Virginia Beach. It's supported by various departments within the city of Virginia Beach and attended by many members of, of the community. And it was held at the iconic and amazing Mount Trashmore Park. This is their, that's in District 3. And I know we talk a lot about other parks, but I just want to remind all of us in the public that Mount Trashmore Park is the most visited park in the city of Virginia Beach by over 1 million people each year. It's, it's a fantastic community space. And many things happen there, including exercise and recreation and flying kites, and the Bridge the Gap Festival, which happened just last Saturday. So I know Councilmember Rouse was there, Councilmember Wooton was there, the mayor was there, the chief of police, or Sheriff Rocky Holcomb, Congresswoman Kiggins. And it was really nice just to see. And it was really nice just to see all of these people coming together in unity and to promote trust and understanding. And the results of this work will definitely result in safer neighborhoods, a safer Virginia Beach, and a community with stronger bonds between the law enforcement professionals and public safety professionals and the people they serve and protect. And I think all parties learned a lot from their experience there, and I did too. And I want to applaud Pastor Bobby White for his vision, and I really want to thank all the people who attended, and I look forward to the fourth annual and continued partnership.
I'll tell you what, Mount Trashmore Park is, you know, it's kind of like the town hall, you know, where a lot of different diverse groups go out there.
Central Park.
Yeah, okay, we'll call that. There we go. But, but once again, you know, kudos, you know, it's really a true destination, really kind of, okay? Who else? Sabrina, please.
That's just what I did. Circle back around to Councilmember Henley's concern. One of the reasons why I was concerned about the Alice Creek application was because of certainly the concerns from the citizens not being able to address it in a public setting and so forth. And so, you know, I think, I know you've mentioned they can do it certainly through open mic, but if it would happen to, that they are able to come and speak in, at one of our workshops, if that gives them more opportunity or time, because with, you know, with three minutes, it's difficult to express your concerns. I just wanted to say I'm certainly in support of that. Also, bringing Alice Creek, the community brought that to our attention, certainly starting with Councilmember Remick. I would like to see if we could, can we have a list of those properties or projects like that? Because I think it's, it's very concerning when those projects take place, and they don't have to go before planning, they don't have to go before city council. And I started to think, last week, when I heard about Alice Creek, how many other properties, how many other projects are going on like that, that are not public, that resident, and that may impact residents in a certainly a major way? But they don't have knowledge about, you know, that it's taking place, or a venue to address their concerns about those kinds of projects. So is that possible? We can have a list of those types of projects that you may know about or come to your attention?
The difficulty with that is, the only time they really come before, that applicants can come before, or come before the Planning Commission or City Councils, when they're asking for a change in use of what's already permitted in the zoning code or some other land use statute. So the lion's share, tens and thousands of what the planning department does and approves every year, are by right transactions that are allowed underneath the different land use zoning codes that the city authorizes. So to bring that to council would be voluminous in terms of breadth and depth and magnitude in terms of information that we bring for council, and the meetings wouldn't be able to function if we were to bring all of those to council for y'all to become aware of.
Oh, no, no, no. My request is, can I have a list of those properties? How can I find out about a list personally, or as a council member? I'm sure you could circulate it to the other council members as well, but I'd like to know if we have more of those projects on the books. And I'm sure you all have a list of that, and I think to be proactive, I think we should know about them as a body, but certainly if, I'm not asking you to bring those forward as presentations. That wouldn't be my request, but a list of those properties, or at least information regarding that. It's helpful for me.
We'll work to see if we can put together a list of all the by right approvals.
That would be great. My, I also have a second part. Did you want to say something?
No, no, but right there.
Okay, the second part of my comments, just focus on visiting the Princess Anne Sports Complex, being invited by attorney Don McCary and Mr. Jeff Doey, going out to see all of the young folks out on the field playing tackle football. And I'm not the only one who visited. Several of you around the table also visited, and I was advised that you did come out. But I would like to just say, number one, it was a wonderful sight. It was a wonderful experience to see those teams of young folks out on that field, to be back out there, to have access to that area, but also to talk to the parents. The parents were very vocal in their gratitude to city council for your investment in that program. That's one of the programs that we know without a doubt it's working, the residents want to see more of. They say it is a sense of community for them, their children are engaged, they are learning life practices, experiences, and just all around great feedback. And they express great gratitude for that program, and I express my gratitude to this body for investing in a consistent way in that program, because it is making a difference. And I know it took all of us working together to do that, and so just wanted to express those, my gratitude and their gratitude as well. And if you didn't get a chance to go out, I know you'll probably have other opportunities. As I was talking to Mr. Doey about it, I said, you should really take some action, some, some video of this and some photos to really show how all of this works together. It's just a beautiful sight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, before I get to Josh, I could just bring up one point about an example, an extreme example of a by right Spence Farm on Princess Anne and, you know, Independence and that area. I forget, multiple couple hundred units and houses and everything was all done by right.
Last comment on that. I think Councilwoman Henley kind of trying to go in the direction of the briefing, and then we had the individuals come up, and if, if there's a desire, this was discussed under city council's briefing, I believe there was the one, two, or four sponsors. So Mayor, if there were three sponsors to have Ms. Warren come and give us a briefing on Sandbridge, that would be within our rules?
I think it may be a good idea to clarify, you know, what's, what by right is about and everything for her to clarify.
It could be done in a workshop.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
It looks good, because I think it would also educate the public, you know, about what's going on. I would, let's go ahead and put that on. I'll sponsor. Okay? And then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple items, just quickly. One was, I had the pleasure and honor of attending the Freedom Fest 2024 at Camp Pendleton in District 5, which is put on by the Virginia Beach Fallen Heroes, which is a group that is, that supports our service members who have, you know, fallen in action and all of public safety, really. And I was, I was glad to see other council members there as well. Our mayor was there, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Remick as well. So it really, really neat festival, if you've never been, because they've got demonstrate, like tactical demonstrations with helicopters and people rappelling out of them, and even service dogs rappelling out of helicopters, and really, really something to see, and it's, and vendors who are supportive of our military families and military personnel and that, that part of our community. So very, very well-done festival, and highly recommend anybody who's not attended to check it out. Also, I just want to give a shout out to the 3rd Precinct Police Department, because I did a ride-along on Friday, the 13th, in the evening. So I was, I was looking for an opportunity to see some, see some things I've not seen before, and that certainly, that certainly was the case. And I just tremendous gratitude to the, to the Captain Elliott at the 3rd Precinct and all the officers under his command, and in particular, the officer that I was able to accompany for most of his eight-hour shift that evening. And it's incredible what they do, and I honestly, I mean, we all think we might know what the life of a public safety official, in particular a police officer, is like, but you really get to see the human side, human element to a lot of really challenging situations in our community and people who are, you know, people who are in, frankly, some of the most vulnerable situations that, that anybody might encounter or experience in their lives, and the professionalism and kindness and patience and, and all of it that are, that our police and fire and EMS personnel display is really incredible. And I don't know how they do the job they do, but I'm glad that they're doing it. And lastly, it's just co liaison to Atlantic Park Project, since my council colleague and co liaison had put forward a couple of comments, just, just reminding everybody that, you know, our portion of, you know, the investment in this project are public facilities. And there is the venue, which is, which, as Councilmember Remick reminded us, something that we, that we promised when we tore down the old dome, that, that we would provide another entertainment venue in that location. We're building two public parking garages. We need parking at the central resort, in the central resort area, and, and we have infrastructure improvements that we're making. We're undergrounding utilities, and that serves two purposes. It's both aesthetics and also resiliency. I mean, I think anytime we can take utilities underground, especially in connection with large projects like this, we should. And has the investment on the public side grown? Yes, as has the investment on the, on the private side, and that is no different than any of our road projects, or stormwater projects, or any other capital projects that have undergone and experienced historic inflation and supply and labor challenges. But to Councilmember Remick's point, I mean, we, by virtue of a transformative project like this, we can up the game and, and really attract in new, not only new visitors, but new residents. We demonstrate that we're capable of something, I mean, really, really big. And, you know, Town Center is a great example of this, although this, this investment is much greater than the one that we made in Town Center. But I, you know, Town, Town Center and public-private partnerships done right have, have the, have the effect of, of attracting in new businesses and new residents to our area. I mean, I know Town Center employs 5,000 people, and I believe contributes approximately $16 million a year to our general fund, so I think we all recognize that the tremendous success and placemaking aspects that, that these, these large-scale developments can have in our community. And I have no doubt that that, the same will be the case for Atlantic Park, for anybody who's not driven by the development. They're making tremendous progress, and it's really taking shape. So I think it's something that we should all be excited for, and that we should all look forward to and celebrate when it opens. Thank you.
Hey, Amelia?
Just two, on Friday the 13th, the 13th gives you a minute. But it was a pleasure to be invited to Crystal City to a special luncheon, and of course, I wrote the Amtrak for Virginia High Speed Rail for 30 years anniversary, and it was wonderful to hear them mention all the different governors. One of our governors from Virginia Beach, former Governor Bob McDonald, was instrumental in putting out $110 million toward this light rail to where it is now, and it is doing extremely well. More people are taking transit than ever. The second was, I was invited to do a welcome remarks over at Sandler on Sunday for the Virginia Symphony Orchestra, and they did their inaugural season event, and it was really well-attended, acoustic sounds, and a great idea where they had a video, animated video that went along with this 24-minute performance that introduced people to the different sections of the orchestra. And I think it would be great to be used, you know, in the schools, for people learning about that. Those are two experiences I had this weekend.
What's your 9/11 update?
Yeah, just a couple things, real quick. First off, we did have the 5th Annual Memorial Log Carry at the Oceanfront for the 9/11, and the mayor and myself and a few others were there, and then the members of our team, the Virginia Task Force 2 that deployed to the Pentagon. Chief Coover, City Manager Coover, Deputy City Manager Coover, said that, you know, when they pulled out of here, they didn't know if they were going to New York City or the Pentagon, and they were diverted to the Pentagon, and that's where they worked. So we're very proud of our team. The battalion chief that's in charge of it is sitting here. It's the longest grant the city has had, I believe, since 1992. We started in Oklahoma, and we've been to every natural disaster and man-made disaster that the country has really known since then. Obviously, 9/11 is a special place for us that we hold near and dear to our heart. We lost a lot of good people, not only in the public safety, but a lot of good Americans. And if you've seen the 60 Minute Documentary, it's quite an impressive, gut-wrenching documentary. We were very fortunate to have a French team here, brother, two brothers that were filming during that period, and they literally caught it all on tape and were a part of it, so that was pretty phenomenal. So thanks for bringing that part up, sir. Just a couple of quick things to switch gears to homelessness in our city. Dr. Ross Hammond and myself are co-chairs for that, but I went to the, we had to divvy out the funds from HUD, it was a million dollars. That's not an easy job, but I can tell you, between the LGBTQ Life Center, the JCOC, KMG, the Planning Council, Samaritan House, and Virginia Beach CDC, they do a phenomenal job with, with not a lot of money. Now, we're paying our staff, I don't mean that, but the, the money that is brought in from HUD is, they are thrifty, and they accomplish a lot. So I wanted to say to them, Ruth, Ruth Hill, Director Hill and her team are quite impressive and everything else that happens underneath them. Then I toured, as a lot of us have, the Four Kids System over in Chesapeake, and they handle beach stuff as well. Again, I mean, that is a top-shelf organization. And Ms. Henley, I'll say this for you, ma'am, I did, I did, they were talking, you know, at the end, they had an ask as far as some money and stuff, and I said, well, you know, you got to go through the COG process. So I said, we need you, we need to do that, you know, we need you to go through that process. So they will, they're gonna put in, and they have in the past, but they're gonna do some for some more. So I just want to let you know, I'm trying to push them in the right direction there. And then, lastly, I'm on, I'm co liaison with Councilman Berluci with the Animal Services Advisory Board. Again, just doing phenomenal work over there. Captain Fox and her team, they had 770 less animals in the, in the shelter system this year than they had last year, and that's a direct correlation to the team's philosophy of trying to get the animals returned to the owners before they leave the neighborhood. And next weekend, they are having a chip community clinic in Aragona. They're gonna pick out neighborhoods over the next little while, and a couple of the volunteers are vets, and they're gonna do the chipping in the neighborhood so that we can increase that number even more. Just to, just to give it some numbers, though, there, there are still over 1.5,000 dogs and 1.3,000 cats a year that go through our shelter system, so it's quite a bit animal shelter. And then there were 200 other types of animals. I didn't go into all the different types, but it was a lot, but very proud of both systems here. They do a lot on a, on a thrifty budget, and I just wanted to give them a shout out. Thank you.
Hey, Chris, and then Rose, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to give a shout out to LJ Hanson, the police department and staff, specifically RJ Mattis. We had a constituent concerned with the construction over at Westminster Camp. We had a constituent concerned with the construction over at Westminster Canterbury and a need for parking restriping on the street. And that was sent on August 29th. We forwarded that to staff and LJ, along with the police chief, were right on it. And I just received an update yesterday, less than two weeks. And this is from the constituent, and she references Mr. Torres. Thank you for a quick and great job of having Starfish Road striped for parallel parking. The Public Works employees did a great job, and I'm very thankful for the attention that both of you gave to my concerns. Too often, folks don't praise a job well done, and I wanted to make sure that you know how grateful the community is for being complete. So thank you to the staff for being so responsive.
Okay, thank you. Rose, Mayor.
Just really quick, almost forgot, thank you, Hudge. I have COG met yesterday, and they, the 35 different applications. Some of them were not complete. 28 will be, and they're going to be interviewed middle of October. They've got two days set up for interviewing.
Okay, thank you. And Worth, Madam Rowell?
Yes, Mayor, thank you, because I thought you might speak about it. But you and I both attended the groundbreaking at Mount Olive Baptist Church in historic Sea-Tac. It's the oldest church in Sea-Tac, very historic, very proud. And so they were replacing a big part of the church. And a groundbreaking was Sunday, well attended, a moving event, readings and scripture and songs about many members of the community. And hats off to them and best, best of luck as they move forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, thank you all very much, and let's go to a council agenda.
So we only have one speaker. I'll have that on consent, if that's okay. Anyway, under ordinance and resolutions, is everybody okay with everything there?
Okay, Worth?
I'm okay. Can I go back up to public hearings before we, because I don't know the protocol here, but the first one, management of city property, Landstown Center Way. I've read the write up and spoken with a number of you all about this particular issue and situation. And I would like to ask for staff to bring us an update, council an update on this entire process and where we are and how we got here. And I'm not necessarily opposed to this, but we did send out an RFP and we got one response. It's a big decision to commit to a 20-year firm term lease for big, most important, very important part of our city, the Princess Anne Athletic Complex. So again, I'm not opposed to it, but I think we all owe it to ourselves and the public especially on this. And so I don't know if we pull this public hearing or what the protocol is, but I would, I think if we can get a staff update, and I'm only one of 11, so.
We still have the public hearing and then have the briefing and then after maybe the following meeting, have the.
We can have a public, we can have a briefing before the vote. Is that a deal, okay?
They'll schedule it for October 1st. The backup documentation is in the agenda this week. But yeah, the votes are scheduled for October 1st.
We just have a briefing next week, can we fit that in?
Yeah, let's go ahead and put that on.
And then we can vote on it October 1st?
Yeah, and then we can vote on it.
But we can still have the public hearing tonight.
Well, I think it's timely that this is coming at the time that we are doing the I T A and the implementation plan, which I think we'll be getting that presentation about that same time. But all of this is, I think we, we really, in looking at this, I'm coming to appreciate just how important this area is and how much opportunity there is. And I think it's extremely important that we make sure we get it all along and to have, you know, the sports complex and the hockey complex as a part of this renewal at this time. We would want to make sure that it's saying what we want it to say for this area. And so it might be, you know, we don't know all of what is in that MOU, but it might be that there are some other things we want to make sure we cover. So I think it's very timely and very good that all of this is coming together at one time. And I think it's a great opportunity for us to make sure we have included all of the potential stakeholders, which I think is everybody in the city for this area, but particularly these that are involved with the income producers, because this area has a great potential, and we have come to understand just how much value it has for our tourism industry. And I think, you know, they need to have an opportunity to have input. So yes, we can have a briefing next week, and if it's ready for a vote the following week, we could, but if we still needed more time, we could do that as well. But I think it's important that we get the feedback from all of these stakeholders. And if we're doing a 20-year lease, we want to make sure we're getting everything we need to get in that, that agreement. So I think it's good that we do get an update next week, you know, kind of go back to how it has been operated, were there issues with the way it was operated that we wanted to correct? How have we corrected it and so forth? So I think this is, this has a lot of opportunity, and we want to make sure we don't miss any of them.
We'll put a briefing on for next week.
Mr. Mayor, just want to clarify. So this council wants to brief them about the bid process that they already authorized and the contents of that bid that they already sent us down the path to do? Or do we want to go back to on the history of the sports complex and infrastructure?
Maybe all of both. Okay, all right. Let's say we, all right.
I said, going on to planning, number one, Mary Lively in District One. Number two, Timothy Posh.
Consent for approval?
Number three, Gordon Crenshaw.
Consent for approval?
Number four, Our Lady of Perpetual Help, District One.
Yep, good.
Number five, Dogs Real Estate.
I maybe, I don't know if I need a letter. I should have asked Mark about this, but we are an adjoining property owner, and so I think I should abstain on that one.
Does anybody else have any problems?
Do you want a letter for you?
Number six, Robert Jessup.
Okay, for consent.
Number seven, Danielle Good.
For consent.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, and the ordinance to adopt a new official zoning map. Is everybody all right with that?
All right, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemption. For the following publicly held property, discussions or considerations of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or the disposition of publicly held property where discussions in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position of the negotiation strategy public body. Districts one, three, four, five, six, and eight. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel, briefings by staff members or constituents pertaining to the actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to section 2.23711A7, and that's Branch versus Virginia Beach. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters regarding the provision of legal service with counsel pursuant to section 2.23711A8. Election system, public contract, discussion of the public award or public system involving the expenditure of public funds and discussions, terms of scope of such contract where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy public health pursuant to section 2.23711A29 of Project Sky at F T O O P. And then personal matters, discussions, considerations or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance of the motion, salaries, disappointing, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of public body pursuant to section 2.23711A1. That's council appointments, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees to have a motion.
Still moved.
Second.
Councilor Berluci?
Aye.
Councilwoman Henley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Remick?
Aye.
Councilwoman McEvan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ross?
Aye.
Councilwoman Stoll?
Aye.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Moon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye. Okay, thank you.